For records.
What?
In the room.
Oh, yeah.
Two of our, a few of our members did not join us tonight. I'm sure it has nothing to do with Amanda's presentation later. Oh, sorry, Amanda is here. Sorry, Amanda.
That's okay.
We've been talking about the budget a lot and I always look forward to our conversations about one hundred and forty-eight million dollars. It really makes my day and Geo's day, too. We're talking finance lately, so that's good.
A hundred and forty billion and a few cents.
Well, they don't end in zero, too. But we'll get to that later. We do, it is after six o'clock, we do have a forum. And so we are in session on this day. Twenty-second of March, thank you. We are not going into exact session because we don't need one tonight. And so we're going to really just go through the agenda as we normally do. And that gets us all out of here. I don't know, maybe Ford's still light up, so we'll, we'll see. But so we'll spend as much time as we need to and we want to. And if we, and just go ahead and get started. And students are here, board's here, Doc Brown. I didn't expect to see you tonight, but it's good to see you. You're here and there where you are. So let's, let's go ahead and get started and Tricia, I believe there's one person that signed up.
Yeah.
Public comment appeared.
Virtually, we have Robert Bellman.
And we'll just have to see if we can get Robert up on the screen. There's Robert, I believe. I mean, he is muted, I believe.
He's, he's not on mute.
Robert, we can't hear you.
Thanks, Chris. And we can't see you anymore.
Robert, you're on mute. Could you turn on your camera and you're unmute yourself?
Emily's trying to help out. Think he disappeared.
He is reconnecting as a panelist now.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Ah, success. Sorry, sorry about that, that took a couple minutes.
Right ahead, Robert.
Hi, so, um, a couple of weeks ago, we found out that Ithaca High School appears to be moving to a seven-period day. And this came as a, quite a surprise when we hit course selection. And talking to a lot of the teachers, they didn't seem to know about it either, and most of the parents. And it's a big concern. I know a lot of kids don't have lunches already because they're trying to take so many classes, but that really says a lot about Ithaca and what we do here. Um, it's, I think a high school's been a place where kids can be both a music major and a math-science type. They don't have to choose. They can take a foreign language and become bilingual while doing other things. The seven-period day begins to really eat in on that. And I don't have, I don't see an easy solution in going to a seven-period day that would preserve that, you know, commitment to both having a, providing a lot of opportunity for everybody. Um, you know, that really, so I guess what I'm asking is, I don't understand the, so I've heard multiple reasons for why, but I'd like, it would be great if we could consider alternatives. We could preserve eight classes so that kids can manage to take sports, music, advanced AP classes, all at the same time without a choice. I think in general, well, so I'm a big believer in being a generalist at a young age. Later on, a lot, hopefully, a lot of these kids will go get their PhDs and become, you know, very highly specified people. But right now, this is about children figuring out what is their future, right? What are they going to be when they grow up? My kids, they're musicians, they're math-science types, they don't have a clue. Um, it's, this is when we have to allow them to explore their interests. And one less period really does that. The high school has an incredible course catalog. I really would like for them to have the opportunity to take some of those courses. So I'd appreciate hearing what people think about this and, you know, is this something that's possible? What are the limitations? How do you get around it? An eight-period schedule has worked in the past. I know the limitation on the school day. A lot of neighboring school districts do a block schedule to get around it. That would work, too. Um, I know one proposal brought up in one of the parent meetings was a slightly shortened period. That also could hit the minimum requirements. It'd be good to know, you know, what drives the decision and what alternatives are plausible and what are not plausible. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. And we'll have board responses shortly. Just assuming there's no one else that wishes to speak from the public. Are we good? And I don't see anyone in the room. Board responses, I know there was just a curriculum committee meeting before this meeting. Eldred, others, do you want to weigh in? Do we?
Sure. Um, so there has been a lot of discourse about this proposed seven-period schedule in the high school. Um, I've, us as board reps and I have also been to quite a few kind of like student meetings about the subject as well. Um, it seems that the rationale for pushing forward with this plan is one to kind of like, basically ensure that everyone has a lunch and has the opportunity to, you know, take that break and whatever that looks like. Um, and the, like, loss of a period is supposed to be compensated by greatly expanded zero-period offerings, meaning if students, if they would like to take eight classes instead of the standard seven, would have to come into school at zero-period, um, starts an hour before the normal school day, and, um, would take that class then. However, that poses its own issues between having to share transportation with the elementary schools, um, generally losing an hour of sleep as a result of it, um, that wouldn't otherwise be lost. Um, and, um, there is also a lot of, you know, zero-period offerings are very limited as of right now, and there could be a lot of challenges posed by trying to expand those to departments that are used to not dealing with that at all. Um, there has been a lot of support, um, both for and against, um, this proposal. Um, I, and I think many other people share the same opinions that you do. However, there's also, um, a lot who don't. Um, it seems pretty likely that this will happen unless it's deemed, like, not feasible by whatever limitations that are set by the state, um, in terms of class time and stuff like that, or contractual obligations of teachers, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, et cetera. Um, yeah, I think that's kind of it for now. There's still a lot that's up in the air. But, yeah.
Thanks, Adam. Board responses out there?
I'll, 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 go ahead.
Nope, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I can't, like, show, show myself because my, my camera's bizarrely not working. But, um, a couple of things. This is, this is not something the curriculum committee, um, discussed today. I don't know that something the curriculum committee can, can or should be looking at before the full board looks at the proposal. If, if it is, then I would suggest that that be our next order of business. Um, as a parent in the district whose, whose kids took full advantage of all of the riches of the Ithaca High School curriculum, I share, I share the concerns, but as a board member, I also have to share the concern that our current eight-period schedule is not in compliance with New York State education law. I would like to hear more from the administration about, you know, as one parent suggested before lengthening the school day. I will also say that, uh, at least one of my children has made use of zero-period since middle school, and those are primarily for a lot of the enrichment activities in middle school. She was going in early, they don't even have a zero-period, she was going in early. For music, in, in high school, she was going in zero-period to be able to do Project Lead the Way. And, um, there are, there are problems of access and equity with zero-period. And I, I would, I would like to hear the administration talk about the possibility of lengthening the school day. We do have the shortest instructional day in New York State versus greatly expanded zero-period. And I would like to hear not only an equity and access, um, analysis, but also a cost analysis. Because of course, you know, teachers who come in for zero-period, uh, receive extra compensation, uh, but that is voluntary as opposed to the entire teachers' union agreeing to zero-period. So, um, I'm concerned about this. I do not, I also do not want to limit students' ability to expose themselves to many subjects to, to get to further know themselves. But I will also say that when, when my kids were in high school, there was, there was also the difficulty of balancing students who wanted to do the maximum and go beyond with students who wanted to do the minimum and go below. So that is, um, that also presents certain, certain issues of just time, time management and resources. So I'm also interested in hearing more about this and why this path is being pursued as opposed to other paths.
Thanks, Pat. Eldred, go ahead.
Our Pat already covered my thoughts and her initial statement. We are doing deep dives into different gray levels so we can uncover these things before they land on us. Resources and technology and scheduling and, but we started with the little ones just yesterday. So we'll talk about whether or not we should move, uh, high school above the three through five and middle school cohorts, but, you know, that's something we can discuss at a later point. But Rob, once we get to it, we will be so thorough, we will have answers for you.
Thanks, Eldred. Assistant-like policy where you can take two or three years, you know, to, uh, probably to dig into it sooner. So, anyway, Chris, Aaron, Nicole, anything?
I guess I would want to hear more from Dr. Brown or Lily or Mary if they're on. What I'll say as a, as a parent and as someone who works in higher education at Cornell, as, as much as I think it's important to think about access and resource in regards to students having the option to explore as much, I think mental health is on the top of all of our minds and not pushing our kids to the maximum just because those options are available. So I, I am more in the mind frame of making sure that all, all of our students have lunch and they have time, time to rest versus making sure that their schedules are packed and colleges are seeing that they are, um, pushing themselves beyond the limit.
Thanks, Nicole.
I, I have to agree with Nicole. One, I want to hear from our, our team more about their perspective on this, but my understanding is that students are really just working really hard. And it's important, you know, in our education system to also teach how important breaks are and lunch is and socializing is. And if anything, I, exploring, expanding the school day sounds better, but those breaks are so important and lunch is important. And, and to know that students were, were skipping it just to, just to go at it. I mean, I think we need to, learning is more, is about just, more than just academics. So, um, yeah, thanks.
Anyone else out there?
I ju, I just want to clarify.
I can jump in.
Vast majority of students that my kids knew took a lunch period. They took it at different, you know, they had like three different lunch periods. So it was not like kids, very tiny number of kids were going through without a lunch period. I was actually heartened by, uh, the video that Adam sent about Jason's presentation that you're talking about, you're still talking about seven periods of instructions with lunch, but that lunch was going to be shorter. And I think that the bigger concern is that, um, the, the logistical concerns that students brought up at the last meeting about can we really serve lunch to every single student at the high school in one period that's a shorter period than they get for their classes? So I, I just, I do want to emphasize that the, the proposition is put forward is that the vast, vast majority of kids were taking seven periods of instruction or fewer, and they would still have seven periods for instruction without zero-period.
Dr. Brown and then, then Adam. Go ahead, Dr. Brown. Do you believe Dr. Brown wanted to speak?
Thank you for the, I was going to share it during my student, but, uh, I think the timing is right, right now. Um, this is one of those complex. Uh, this is one of those complex issues with no obvious solution. And about the, it's a high school schedule for about a year now that has been inclusive. I have recognized how our, our team of administrators and teachers and students have not embraced a sense of urgency and have not embraced perfectionism. If we've taken our time, complex issue, and we know that no matter what we put forward, it will not be good for young people. We do know, I am the one, probably myself and Jason Trump will know this more than anyone else in this community. The folks who have asked for eight or nine periods a day without a lunch, they can go through our entire academic program at Ithaca High School. And then every year, it never fails, in June, late June or July, I sit with those families with folks who are in tears, saying how hard it was and how it impacted their mental health. So, uh, yes, we are addressing this issue because of state mandated relations. We're also addressing it in response to student voice and choice and parents who have been stressed out, uh, without eating. And I see it every day, who have been stressed out without having a, an opportunity to connect with their friends. So that's the journey we're on. And Mr. Trumpel and his team will be at our next board meeting to share where we are with this very important decision they need to make at that school.
That's all. So that, thanks, everybody. Now, Adam, and then we'll just roll, we'll, we'll just roll into student, well, student, yeah. Go ahead, let the guy, and then we'll come back to, um, there you go.
Yeah, so just staying on the topic of, um, the lunch ordeal for now. Um, there's no doubt that students, some students who take on an, um, eight classes in a day without, um, taking a lunch period, um, may suffer for it. I have been fortunate that in my experience of going a year without lunch, and many of my friends as well, I didn't suffer for it. I, it actually allowed me, and many, many other people I know, the ability to pursue our real interests while still in high school. Um, I have been a musician for my entire life. I still play the violin. And the way that the IHS curriculum is built, um, for all of my underclassmen years, I was not able to take on another elective, other than my musical elective, um, without losing a lunch or being forced to take a zero-period. I'm not a morning person, and thus I decided to forego my lunch. I ate with like five or six other people in another class. And fine, that allowed me to pursue my, my actual academic interests beyond just the core curriculum. Um, this could also apply to someone who wants to take an art class along with their music class, or someone who wants to be, to learn to code or be an engineer, or take really any sort of class that's outside of the standard, like, New York State requirement curriculum. Um, and I think taking, and although, you know, lunch is incredibly valuable, there's no doubt that, um, there is immense value in taking forty minutes a day to eat, socialize, and whatnot. Um, I think it would really, really be to the detriment of the student body of IHS to take away, um, and to restrict students' access to, um, branching out in school, whether that be with AP classes or engineering classes or art classes or all of the above. Um, and within the current system, um, students who want a lunch can have it. There were issues with the master schedule this year that meant some students had to take study hall instead of lunch. Um, but, um, you know, same applies. Um, and although this, this move would create more equality in our school because everyone would be forced to take that lunch and, and about fifteen percent of the school would be forced to remove a course from their schedule, um, it would make access to these supplementary, um, opportunities a lot more difficult for many people who perhaps don't have the means to get to school early and don't have the means to seek these things out after school or at home. Um, and that, that really concerns me. Um, so that, that's my view. Um, I know a lot of people agree and disagree with me, but, but, yeah. Um, for that.
Yeah, so in news this week, um, Ithaca High School's choir had an amazing concert on the eleventh. It was a Friday. Uh, they, they displayed a diverse amount of talent that left many in tears. Um, spring sports like track, tennis, and lacrosse have also started up, and lots of students have tried out for that. Um, IRISE also displaying the influence of our extracurriculars. I recently interviewed our own Ithaca mayor just yesterday. The new Tyler issue is releasing next Friday and will feature an editorial on sixteen- and seventeen-year-olds voting in board elections, so be sure to read it. Um, this week is also particularly hard for seniors. Many of their causes, many of their college decisions are coming out this week. And as a result, stress is running high and is especially bad. Mental health issues have already been amplified by the pandemic, but this week in particular is especially, um, hard for seniors. Guidance counselors are stepping up to the plate as always and providing much-needed support for students. Acknowledging this, mental health is always a present issue at our school, one that needs more understanding and awareness. Students are also enjoying the school lunches, both the variety of food provided and the fact that they're free this year. Uh, my question is, is what funding has made them free this year? And will they be free next year?
Um, so something else, um, the other student reps and I, uh, looked at the agenda for tonight's meeting and noticed that there was a draft schedule for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty school year on there. Um, and we ultimately noticed about this new, uh, sorry, not scheduled, draft calendar, um, that the Jewish High Holidays, um, Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, uh, the school, the district will actually have off this year. Um, and Adam and I, uh, being Jewish students, um, know the struggle of in past years when we've had to miss schools to attend religious events and services. Um, and have had, especially in the beginning of the school year when these holidays fall, it's been very difficult to catch up. Um, so we just wanted to acknowledge, um, that this step is being made and are very happy and completely endorse this new move by the district. Yeah. Um, I second everything Aton just said. Um, so another thing that's been on, on a lot of people, in a lot of people's conversation I'm personally within IHS, um, has been job posting, um, that the district has made public recently, um, that's been circulating through the community. This being for a public information specialist with a salary of about ninety-five to one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year. Um, many people in the community have been wondering kind of what the role of this person, um, in this position will be. There's been speculation that this role is being set up for someone within the district to get a promotion and likewise, um, that it will be for someone brought in from the outside. There's also much conversation about the size of the salary, and many feel that this one-hundred-thousand dollars plus, um, would be better spent on hiring new teachers and essential workers within the district rather than on another administrative position. Um, the, the job posting was also quite vague, so we're wondering if you could clarify more details on it and perhaps also how we, the students, uh, would be affected by the creation of this position.
Um, in the last meeting, we and IRISE discussed the importance and the policy of lowering the school board voting age to sixteen. Um, we would love to hear if any updates on this on JH. Also, I'd like to discuss one of the most pressing concerns of students at IHS bathrooms. When a bathroom is first built, there comes a time when a bathroom becomes dilapidated, old, crusty, and is plain unusable. This is what has happened to most of our IHS bathrooms, especially in the G H and G and H building, as well as K. It's hard to put in words how damaged and unusable our bathrooms are. The bathrooms are frequently closed due to unsent circumstances, and oftentimes the faucets barely work. So students are unable to wash their hands after they use the bathroom. The tiles and some bathroom ceilings are broken, and there are just empty holes above the foot. Some locks and handles of bathroom stalls don't work either. All their graffiti has run rampant, especially this year, and I believe this is because the bathrooms are already so rundown, it's a perfect breeding ground for defacement. This problem has become so serious that there was a Tyler article written about this with an interview with Mr. Trumpel. I believe this is because our bathrooms are honestly so disgusting and rancid, students take out their frustration by damaging the bathrooms even more. At this point, many students do not use the bathroom and wait.
Until they go home.
Oh, yeah, and, yeah, and wait until they go home. Do not drink water to avoid going to the bathroom, or in some cases, seniors go off-campus to just be able to use a bathroom and relieve themselves. Working faucets, lock-in stalls, and not even clean, but just not gross facilities are the very basic features and requirements of a bathroom that are not being met at IHS. I and a huge majority of students really believe a cleaner, new environment invites more respectful treatment and would significantly improve students' experience at IHS as well as meet the most basic needs of a person. An example of this is the bathroom in the K Building. It is fairly new, clean with working faucets and stalls. There's no graffiti or any problems with the space because, as I mentioned before, students want to keep these new bathrooms new and clean. I think the custodians and staff would do their best to keep the bathroom in working order, although it is rapidly becoming impossible to do so. The reason I'm mentioning this today is that I did see the renovation of IHS bathrooms is included in the capital project, but this happens, I believe, next summer in twenty-twenty-three after full school year. Please correct me if I'm wrong. The student body and the representatives to the Board of Education strongly believe that the bathrooms will not last until then and would like to request a change in the schedule of reconstruction if possible. Thank you.
Thanks, Ithaca. Hi, Alicia.
Uh, as you, people at Orange Citrus know this, but thank you. You guys should have received them. I hope you guys are enjoying them. Uh, we just got done with our P V A T, which is our process of kind of, our, we've talked about this before. But all of our students class with flying cover, color, I think covers, flying colors. And there was actually a couple of board members that came in to watch some of our English present, presentations, so thank you for who did that. And, uh, we, the JHRS Committee, which is kind of what organizes our student government and how we vote and stuff, recently assigned roles of assigning the queue and who's doing the publicity for L A C S and all those types of roles. And they're going to affect currently, our last A S M was about different schedule changes and how are we can make our system more effective. And we recently had a proposal to make A S M a permanent period during our sixth period instead of a floating time period, um, which rotates every week for us currently except for our first period because of transportation issue. Then we had another proposal actually done by our principal to make our school days start later. So buses can be accommodated and teachers can have their first periods back without, she's like students coming in super late. And, uh, our mock child team just found out that we are going to be in person for our county meet, but then virtual for the rest of the competition. And I picked up a old backhand. Oh, and Andrew's getting testing for his driver's license, I want to let you know, so that's. But.
Infusion Week, um, basically what Infusion Week is, is a time where we have the school come together and, um, basically, um, infuse our classes, um. Infusion Week is a week of school where we have workshops surrounding social justice topics such as climate change, um, M L, B L M in school, youth activism, um, et cetera, as well as Infusion Weeks are our regular, um, are like regularly infused into our classes, not just like as workshops, um. Yeah, it's throughout the week done, and this is the week, so Infusion Week, um. And some topic, and this year's topic is human rights in the prison system and how that affects like multicultural backgrounds and such as, um, such things like that. Um, and some of our topics, well, today is Tuesday, so we have workshops Tuesdays and Thursdays. Um, so today's workshops were, um, with Justin Walden on human rights in regard to Medicare, uh, medical care and access and access within the prison system, um, C A, C, CEO um, of the medo- and medical rep, director of Reach. Um, and then Barbara Baron and Thomas Edwards with, um, Circles of Support. Um, and they basically just came in and talked about their experiences, um, as incarcerated people. Um, and then talking, honey, Human Rights Commission's workshop, um, the topic of the Human Rights Commission came in and just talked about how humans' rights are violated. And then Richard Rivera, a formerly incarcerated, um, man came in and spoke on his experiences as a, um, formerly incarcerated, um, man. And then Thursday's workshops are as follows. And then we have just the Dr. Museum of Art, um, Barbara Baron again, and Human Rights Commission. And then we have Thomas Edwards, um, as well as Service Family Group, um, which is basically like a group of students, um, which have researched, um, the topic and are presenting to this whole school.
Excellent, thank you. Board responses? Those who are not in the room?
I'd, I'd like to make response especially to the question of the bathrooms at IHS and I will, I will, two, uh, preliminary observations. One is that I do not regularly attend the facilities committee meetings. Meetings, um, because all of our time is limited and I do not feel that is where my talents and expertise lie. But also observe that I'm coming to the end of my eleventh year on the board and every year that fail, um, we hear about how horrible the bathrooms are at Ithaca High School. And I have heard about this, I've heard about this much longer than eleven years because I have a thirty-eight-year-old daughter. Uh, but it's, it does seem to be a perennial problem and, um, I, I do believe some aspects of it are being addressed, but I've also heard that before over the years that this is going to be addressed. So I would like to hear more about this as well.
I second Pat with wanting to hear more about bathrooms and to the question about school lunches. Um, it's something that we have discussed in Legislative Advocacy Committee. Um, and it is, it is, it is something that we are talking about and will be working on in a week, the, um. I'm sorry, I feel like I'm incoherent today, but, um, uh, the head of food service, Beth Kraus is, um, expecting that it will probably continue on because it's been so successful and because it's helped so many people. So, um, if that is something that students are interested in, by all means, you know, send me an email with your testimonials so we can send them to, uh, government leaders to say, hey, this is part of the reason we want to do this. It's important and students appreciate it and families appreciate it and this is something that should continue.
Yeah, anyone else?
Hi folks, this is Chris, um. Uh, I'm glad that folks were happy with some of the changes to the district calendar. Um, as all of you know, unfortunately, the calendar can never be one size fits all and accommodate everyone. Um, so while some folks may be happy with, um, how things work out, I'm sure there's someone else out there. They may be negatively affected. And I, you know, I want to make sure we all keep that in mind. Uh, in regards to the details of the, uh, the posted position, I, I not at a place where I can speak to that and the specifics of the job description. However, um, I can definitely speak to the fact that that in no way, shape or form affects us hiring teachers moving forward. And we've been continuously hiring and trying to recruit teachers ongoing, um, throughout the pandemic and throughout my entire tenure on the board. Um, so that is not an issue. And I don't honestly have a response, uh, for the voting age change. I have not been able to, uh, sit and take part in a conversation with that. But I will definitely get with my colleagues and we'll, um, put that together to discuss moving forward. And, uh, you know, oh, give me one second, E. No, you know what? Go ahead, E. You got it.
I just wanted to follow on your last comment there about the voting race. Um, Sean and I have talked, and I am trying to get on, um, our local Assemblywoman's calendar and a calendar to see how we might be able to coordinate, begin to coordinate a strategy and, um, and bring your request to fruition. So there has been some movement, um, uh, that I will keep you updated on the speed at which we move this forward. We, we, we hear you. And we are already spoken about inviting you, two colleagues who spoke so eloquently to that conversation with Anna, and, uh, we'll see what we can get done. Thanks for the push.
Thanks, everyone. Um, I'll just, uh, respond to a few things. Um, Free Lunch For All, it's a federal program, so there wasn't, there was an article or an update, uh, I think it was from the past week. Um, that program as of right now is not a part of the, this next federal budget. So it will end in June, um, and if it is not added in some way to the federal budget, it will not be in place for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. That does not mean that something could happen. It would be funded, but as of right now, um, it was a, it was a program that was started because of COVID. And so as we're moving beyond, or at least in the future, um, there is, um, either an opportunity to keep it going or there is an opportunity to, uh, sunset the program and then go back to really a three-tiered program that we've had in the past. Um, uh, unlike Pat, uh, I've been to probably every facilities committee, uh, meeting for a long, long time. Uh, as we've gone throughout the district through the two thousand seven, um, facilities bond and as we're, I'm doing now, uh, we've been updating bathrooms throughout the district. Um, Phase Two will be updating bathrooms and went into it. Uh, we are looking at updating bathrooms, uh, at Ithaca High School. K Building is a good example. That was a project that was taken on in the interim, um, right for updating bathrooms at K. Uh, that was hundreds of thousands of dollars to do that. So we, uh, there are, those are updated, the bathrooms by the cafeteria are fairly updated. There's new bathrooms in Culp when that was, uh, remodeled, uh, the Performing Arts Center was essentially, uh, expanded. So there, those bathrooms, so but, um, and certainly the second gym and all the bathrooms over in that J home, whatever, whatever the new second gym, the wave room, facilities, like all that. So we've been circling G and H, right? So that's, uh, and we've talked about, uh, uh, we talked about work that we hope to do in Phase Three, uh, coming up in G and H. And every facilities meeting, every O A C M meeting, Amanda, somehow, somewhere, we're talking about bathrooms. Uh, gender inclusive bathrooms, we're replacing, um, really updating bathrooms, not only at Ithaca High, but throughout the district. Every elementary school, we're going in and updating bathrooms. So it's, um, it's a high priority, it's front of mind, um, and the it's not all that complicated, but, um, you know, for not doing work in, work in a building, we can't, through state ed, we have to do something else there. So, um, so we're really working toward it. And, uh, but yeah, it's, um, I, I don't like any part of this district, any part of the facilities that is not what we would expect it to be for Ithaca High School, what we would want to use. So it's a constant battle basically, um, and, but there's a lot of, a lot of traffic. And so that's, that's what we deal with, but yeah, we're, we're going to be replacing and updating every bathroom at Ithaca High School at some point and sooner the better. And, um, and Dan, uh, Dan Bryman behind you, Doctor, Doctor Bryman behind you is, uh, is our point person on, um, facilities in the big picture, working with Amanda in the Facilities Committee and the owner, architect and construction manager meeting, which I get to go to. Um, and where are the priorities? Where do we spend the next dollars? And certainly bathrooms are, uh, are a high priority, as long with the other improvements we wish to make. And Amanda, I don't know whether they do want to weigh in on that.
Yeah, so, um, you know, we did do K, right? And then, um, in Phase One, the bathrooms that were redone at the high school were the ones in the nurses suite that need wellness suite, right? So all of those bathrooms redone now, and then also in activities, right? And so Ithaca High School has had a lot of Phase One capital project work. And I hate to say it, but it's L A C S's turn this summer to get some work done as well as South Hill. And then the following summer will come back to Ithaca High School. There's also construction fatigue that buildings get, right? And so it's not that it's not being done, but there is a, there's a reasoning behind the scheduling. South Hill and L A C S waited. They waited two whole years while construction was happening all over the district and most of it happening at Ithaca High School, right? So that they could actually be part of that design process for their new, um, entries and their bathrooms as well, which are the shovel.
Yes.
Um, and so we hear you, Chris. We want to do it all, but there's also financing, right? So you can only do so many projects each year because you can't go and borrow all of that money at once. You have to phase it out. And so in all fairness, that's why Ithaca High School will go next summer so that we can actually address Enfield's boiler situation, right? Heating and cooling and a bathroom there as well as a L A C S and South Hill. And so we have addressed a lot of bathrooms, not G and H, but that will be coming. So in the short term though, we hear you in terms of improvements for making those spaces better, right? We can't like gut them, we can't remodel them until next summer. But if it's like a door replacement or water faucets aren't working or toilets are leaking or, um, you know, there's issues around just, um, the cleanliness, those are things that we can control right away. And so those are things that we can absolutely do. We can't change the schedule at this point, just in fairness to the other buildings. So that's, those are the reasons behind it.
Yeah, I understand. It would be great if the changes that you mentioned could happen though.
Yeah, yeah, no, G and H are on the schedule. They are going to be happening just the following summer, so, um, so they'll happen.
Yeah, I guess I understand that there is a certain schedule and priorities that we need to follow. I think I'm just concerned that the bathrooms won't last the following summer and we won't like have the most important bathrooms to use.
So that's a, that's a general maintenance issue, a day-to-day operations issue, and that will be addressed.
Okay, I get it.
We can, um, we can look at, uh, G and H tomorrow with our maintainers and check on the locks and the stall, uh, the locks on the stalls. We can look at the faucets. We can do a walkthrough. I really appreciate you sharing all this information. It's really helpful for us and I'll take it back to our maintenance department and we will, we will work on this, uh, this week. We will start working on this, this week, looking at it and seeing what improvements we can make. So sorry about that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And we'll have, uh, we'll have many updates in a little bit and we'll talk about, uh, updates in facilities. But, um, just one, two last things. Um, the grapefruits, really juicy. I mean, if you like, well, if you like grapefruit, I mean, really outstanding grapefruits and just, uh, so that's great. And I do, for the, for the folks out there, the folks in the, um, Legally Blonde, next Friday, Saturday and Sunday. But really easy just to go to the website and you can buy tickets right online. Just in case there's more people then you can, can go at a certain time. I would certainly highly recommend just go online, buy a couple of tickets, take in some of the best talent and great shows that Ithaca High puts on. It's been a couple of years really since I think we've had a really open attendance at, uh, one of the shows and one of the big shows. Not that we don't appreciate, we appreciate the Black Box Theater and all that's on there, but it'd be very nice to be able to see, you know, show it at Ithaca High. Um, so, um, grapefruits and show. But yes, I, I forgot about, I didn't forget about L A C S, but L A C S is part of Phase Two. And, uh, we just had the vid openings today and so it's, we're pretty much good to go, but we'll talk about. So it's very exciting to, new entryway, new stuff. It's, uh, we like new. And, uh, speaking of new, uh,
Do you mind if I make one quick? Um, I just, I, I just wanted to respond about the public information specialists and say, um, personally, I think it's an, an important position as we think about the last couple of years. And some folks, parents, community members can say more than the past few years. Um, I would say our district has struggled with communication, whether that is getting it out in a timely fashion, responding to the needs of parents, students. And as we think about having a district of ten buildings, I think it's important to have someone who is able to think strategically about how we disseminate information and how, how quickly we can get that out there and how much detail we are providing in terms of the description. I would say that's probably more of a BOP slash, um, Dr. Brown question, but I do find the position to be important in terms of communication being something that is not our strong suit currently.
Thank you. And nothing else out there, let's go ahead and, uh, approve the consent agenda. And I think Doctor Brown, you might speak to, uh, some of the items on the consent agenda after we vote on it. So I'd love to be able to vote on it, which means you all out there have to move in second and we can vote.
I will move the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Pat. And Tricia, if you could call the roll.
Rob Ainsley?
Yes.
Erin Cora?
Yes.
Eldred Harris?
Yes.
Nicole LaFaye?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Patricia Lozen?
Yes.
Thank you all, there were important items in the consent agenda, now that it's passed. Dr. Brown, you want to speak to it, or does anybody speak to it?
I do wish to, I hope my sound is better, is that better, Miss Daniel?
So do I.
Oh, cool, thank you for the opportunity. Hey, well, I bring you greetings from Washington DC, and Erin, you would appreciate this. The cherry blossoms are blooming, let me just tell you right now, it's awesome out here, and the sun is shining. I've, I've spent the day with Asian medical program administrators and sharing some of the things about our work, learn some things from them. I'll spend some time tomorrow in a space that I cannot say publicly right now, which I'm excited about too. But anyway, thank you for this opportunity to join remotely, and most importantly, the consent agenda, thank you for the, thanks to the board for your support. We have, you just approved the new Associate Principal at Duitt Middle School, Ms. Ramel Liverpool. She's coming to us from the Johnson City, Binghamton area, and she is a superstar. We welcome her, we're looking forward to her being in the space in the near future. She hopefully, she will hopefully transition in the coming weeks and be with us to finish the school year. But welcome, Ramel, we're looking forward to you being a part of the team, and we're super excited about this particular hire. Also, wish to share, I've appreciated the comments tonight, we have invited Mr. Trumble to join us at a future board meeting, hopefully the next board meeting, to talk about the complex issues around scheduling. And also, you know, hopefully, we're gonna have a special meeting next week, or in two weeks, or in April, where we're gonna talk about the budget. And as part of the budget process, we will talk about positions, shifts, and allocation, reallocations of resources. But quickly, in response to some of the questions about the Public Information Officer role, and thank you, Nicole, for your, your thoughts and your comments on this particular position that I also see as needed in our school community. We oftentimes hear organizations like ours struggle with the evolving nature of communications. I think it was around six years ago, I was a part of doing an analysis of small city school districts in the Albany area, in the Hudson Valley area, and folks we benchmark ourselves against. Those school districts were spending a million, a million, or at minimally, a half a million dollars on communications departments. We have been perpetually and traditionally underfunded or under-resourced when it comes to our communications team. Now, we currently have a third-party contract with the BOSIs to provide communication services, but those folks are not in-house employees, and that is a pretty pricey contract. We're bringing that contract in-house, y'all. So, what we're doing to build a communications department will be us shifting some resources that are already existing and bringing back a contract that was existing with third-party provider. So, we'll talk about this much more when we do our budget presentation, but I want folks to know this is a needed position. We still, from our perspective, are gonna be somewhat underfunded when comparing ourselves to other districts of our size. But in time, I hope we build, build that department to provide a better service to our communities and to our schools. Anyway, thank you for that opportunity, and I look forward to being with y'all in person the next time, as we talk about these items and more.
Dr. Brown, did we, when I mentioned on the personal report, didn't we approve stuff? Yes.
For the Employees Association.
Can we, can we talk about that a bit?
Yes. And Bob, you want, you're in the room, can you mind sharing some of the highlights of that particular one too?
Sure, yeah, it's an Employees Association, for those that don't know, that covers everything from clerical in the buildings, to custodial, to bus drivers. I don't want to leave anyone out, I shouldn't have started listing.
Nurses.
Nurses, and we've been in negotiations with the union, they've been very productive and collaborative negotiations. We've settled, the union voted about a month ago, and then it's worked its way through the board in a succession, and now the board has just ratified it. So, five-year agreement with raises each year, five percent each year. And I think it's really, it's gonna place our Employees Association in a very competitive position when we go out to recruit and retain people.
So, I want to make sure that we are able to speak to it, now that, now that we voted on it in the past. And it's certainly a tribute to Linder, your work, and Bob, your work, and HR, on tilling positions when we were in negotiations. But now, I believe we have more, more clout when we're going, providing opportunities to nurses, bus drivers. There's, there are nice benefits in that, in those, in the current contract, for many of our positions, positions of folks that are critical to the district. But in order to, in order to get kids to school, in order to make sure the building looks the way it should, and, and really sees to the needs of everyone in this district, all staff and all administrators, obviously, so, appreciate it. And we look forward to, it's, it's final now, basically, doesn't, somebody has to sign something, but not me, isn't it? All right, so, so very good, and I appreciate that, those are the two big items in the consent agenda. And now, we're, we're okay for school district business, and Dr. Brown, you've already spoken, right? Do you need to speak to anything else, you're good?
Not right now.
And the academic calendar draft was mentioned already tonight, and Lily, I think you typically speak to calendar, do you not?
I sure do, and I'm happy to this evening, thanks so much. Patricia, would you mind pulling it up, this, this, for just a moment, thank you so much, appreciate it. For those who, who don't know me, my name is Lily Taggitt, and I'm the Deputy Superintendent of the Ithaca City School District. Eton and Adam Meldet, in their update, indicated that indeed, the draft that we're presenting now is, is updated and reflects our commitment to greater inclusion, right? So, several years back, folks from LACS, part of their facing bias credits, and students from South Hill in fourth grade, they worked together on an anti-marginalization curricular unit, and they examined our academic calendars through the lens of the question, who's included? Right, they collected a bunch of data from students in grades three through twelve regarding their experiences of the calendar and their religious affiliations. And they interviewed it, they interviewed local faith leaders, and so they collected qualitative and quantitative data, and they provided some suggestions for an updated calendar for, for us. Ultimately, the calendar did not change. So, the next year, another group of students, again from LACS and South Hill, worked together, again presented some additional drafts and some, some ideas. We've been working behind the scenes to take a look at some possibilities that are greater, that are more inclusive, and allow those who identify as Muslim, those who identify as Jewish, to not have to pick between practicing their religion that day and being a full member of our community on that, right? So, knowing that there's more effentism, and that folks have to choose between those identities on those days was something that we really wanted to listen to and hear and respond to. So, what you'll see this year is you will see some shifts and some changes around Yonkour and Doritashana. It's important to note that this year, Eid, what some folks refer to as Big Eid, it falls on a weekend in April, right? But moving forward, we're anticipating and understanding that it would be important also for, for, for us to not have school in session. So, this is the, this is the draft academic calendar that based on students, based on the young people's feedback, and not, a number of folks from our equity team, too, so a number of our dad, who's been fabulous, what I read here as well, has suggested. Patricia, there's also a preface, so one of the suggestions that some folks had was that we work on a a preface as well to this, to sort of explain, either at the second page or the first page. This is maybe something that policy would be interested in addressing, or we could certainly take feedback on. But it just sort of gives a little bit more context, so people understand what the change is and why, as a possibility. For those who can't see it, it simply says, "In the Ithaca City School District, we are deeply committed to equity and inclusion. Our curriculum, our hiring practices, our budget, our academic calendar, and other elements of our organization must be a reflection of this commitment. For the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three academic year, we are working toward greater inclusion of traditionally marginalized members of our community. Those folks who identify as Muslim and Jewish will no longer need to choose between being part of the ICFD or practicing. Our students have been pioneers of this work, and their efforts have led our district to be more inclusive." That's a draft preface, that kind of gives a little bit of context, it's short, and then folks can, and people can know that. So, up for discussion, here are some thoughts, suggestions, and we'd love to hear from the board. So, please, questions, thoughts, ideas from the adult board members, from the student board members.
Well, we wait for other board members to weigh in. Okay, so, in this draft, in twenty-twenty-two, we can schedule our academic calendar in this fashion, because the holiday days fall in a certain time, and we are able to incorporate. Okay, but that changes. So, are we committing to always working that in on a year-to-year basis? It's just not a chance that we are able to hit it this next year, or what's, how do we, are we handling this?
Yeah, good question. So, our, our recommendation is that we do commit to ensuring that there's no in-school, you know, that we're not in session on those, those three days moving forward. So, those are both Muslim and Jewish holidays. And we know that each year, we will have to look at the, the dates of those, and then figure out the best way to move forward, whether it's starting earlier, ending earlier, shifting vacations. We'll continue to collaborate with our, our association president as well. We had a number of conversations together with the heads of, of all of our unions as well, in order to, to.
Well. And I know, like I said this before earlier, but as like a Jewish student, this just means like so much to me, and so much to many other Jewish and Muslim students as well. And I think that like, going forward, I really hope that this continues. And that it can, it doesn't just have to be like a one-year thing, because it worked out with the, like, five of the dates this year. So, yeah.
Sure, I'd like to center with Eton, like, what I'm, my, like, biggest year-to-year struggle as an ITC student has always been making it work from the holidays. My, like, you can, you can go through my school tool and see how I have a tracker of my first quarter grades, always being the worst, because of the amount of school I, I was forced to miss. So, this is a really great development, I think. And I'm really, really encouraged by this, and I'm, I'm very happy that my brother won't have to go through all of the needless work that I did for the sake of, you know, being a part of our, of the culture, so, thank you so much.
Any, any questions from the board? While they're thinking, Lily, this is a draft, eventually we adopt, when are we looking to adopt?
So, typically, we have a comment period, so we put this out on the website, and then we ask the community to provide feedback in relationship to this. So, there is a comment period that will be open typically at last a few weeks. So, with your approval to put this out into the community, we would then do that as early as tomorrow.
Bob, I think there was one year, we voted on it six times, I think.
That's what Lily does now.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Bob, thank you, Lily. There was, we kept adjusting and changing, or, yeah, and we got voted. Eventually, we had a bunch, I'm sorry, a calendar, sorry, I'm thinking about budget already, Amanda.
That's exciting, man.
We're gonna get there. I'm giving everybody just a few minutes, but Chris, if you, Chris, if, any, any questions or others, go ahead.
I don't have any questions, I'm, I'm really happy about the level of student involvement. We, this has been a topic of discussion as long as I can remember. You know, and you asked the questions right out the gate, you know, is this something we can commit to? Or, or is it something we'll have to look at year over year? Lily answered that, so I'm happy to move forward.
And Lily will be working with BOSIs on our, our calendar may indeed be different than our, the other component districts. We have a different, well, we're just different, so, that's okay. But, Elder, anything?
Thanks, Rob, I just want to give a shout-out again to the kids who originally came to us. I remember the LACS adults, Sam in particular, working with the little kiddos who came and began to show us the light, so I just want, want to give them props again, thanks.
I think we're good, feel free to put it on the website, and obviously, we're ready to vote whenever everybody else is ready to vote. And so, Greg, thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to making it work in the future. And Amanda, we're, feel free to pull up a chair or sit stand, at one of those sit-stand desks, we, we should have one.
Sorry, that's right. I know, so it's.
Always a pleasure, Amanda, and.
Oh, thanks, everybody.
It is, it is budget season, and we're coming up on budget adoption, perhaps in a few weeks, so.
Ah, it's happening.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's happening, and so, I have an updated calendar for everybody. Before it begins, I just want to say, I think every year, we've had wonderful student groups. This year in particular, I really appreciate how much feedback you give during the budget presentations. I feel like I can look down this row, and I just get like, just really thoughtful comments, thoughtful questions, so thank you for that. This is the most engaged group in budget that I've ever had, so I really, really appreciate all of you for being here every single Tuesday, and not getting tired of my voice yet, or at least not sharing with me that you're tired of my voice. So, fiscal year, Patricia, the next slide, right? I try to share this every single time we come together, because there is a sort of predictable timeline to all of this. And we did, you know, add a new meeting on April fifth, so that we have a little bit more time to be able to talk again, once again, about budgets, so that we're building our confidence and building our knowledge base, and so that when, you know, the, the budget, whatever that might look like, is adopted by the board, when we go out to the community, all of us are educated and engaged, so that we can answer the questions, right? So, that we can be there and really, even if we don't know the answer, know where to send people, right, to get the answer. So, that's really important. And so, you know, here we are, right, March twenty-second, we're gonna be a little bit redundant to what we did in Finance Committee, and mainly because at Finance Committee, we shared the expenditure budget, right? And it's still draft, but it's really close, I mean, I think that we pretty much have it locked down. So, Patricia, if you can go to the next slide, that would be great. And in this presentation, which will be on the, on the website, this is a PDF that I created as well, so you can click on here to get to this, or this PDF itself, it's about six pages long, and it takes you through code by code, and it sort of gives you an overview of what, what the budget, what we're gonna be spending our money on, right? And so, I'm gonna start with this graphic, and then maybe, Patricia, will click in just a second, but let's just start here. So, I wanted to kind of describe this, this PDF to everybody, and then this will be actually public, this will be in the documents that we provide at all of the sort of local government entities, the libraries, we can put them in buildings, and it sort of gives an overview for everyone. Like, trying to do it in such a manner that you can kind of take a look at it, and you see it in groups, right? So, we can start with the Board of Education, right? And it gives the sort of the red banner across each of these. So we can start with the Board of Education, right? And it gives this sort of the red banner across each of these elements. It's sort of that grouping of those budget codes and sort of what they capture, right? So they'll give a very brief description sort of of like, what is this? Um, what, what do these couple of lines look for? We also use these when we're building a budget doc that goes out to the public, which is called a three-part budget, right? You take certain categories and you have to lump them into certain things, administration, program and capital. Okay, and so that also helps us guide sort of that process. So people can get a sense of, of what's going into it. Each one of these categories then is broken down, right? So there's a Board of Education line or area of the budget, right? Tricia is, is paid out of that budget. The Board of Ed is not paid, they are volunteers, right? Tricia's the board clerk, any help that she would get would be in there. Um, there's uh, fees for what we do in terms of supplies and materials for all the meetings, right? That would be listed. And you're gonna see that going through each element, right? When you get into instruction, which is a little bit later in the document, you're gonna see things that are called instructional salaries and non-instructional salaries. All right, instructional salaries are teachers, TAs. Due to state law, teaching assistants are actually usually non-instructional salaries because they're not TRS or Teacher Retirement System. And I try to explain that in the document as you go through, so you can see sort of what categories are in each of those, even though they are key to instruction, right? We just have to follow certain rules of the way New York state municipal law and, and, and budgets are, are developed. You're also gonna see throughout, um, you know, there's some sort of uh, like I try to subtotal things so that you can see in each of the groupings, right? How much something is worth? And then you're also gonna see throughout underneath some of the line items that have had some significant changes. And significant changes might mean a percentage increase that's high or a dollar amount that's high, right? Um, and so you might see a high percentage, but it might only be like five hundred dollar change because the budget line went from like a doll, you know, whatever, twenty dollars to something else, right? We're not gonna describe that, but if it's like a couple thousand, tens of thousands, we're gonna be describing why that made that change. And you'll see a lot of times it might be because we're bringing in a service from BOSI's and now we're funding it in the, in the district. So Dr. Brown mentioned that's what we're doing with communication. We're doing that in the business office as well, right? We have a service that currently exists at BOSI's. We actually really need that position here. We're gonna be decreasing one line item and increasing another line item, right? So then that way, that funding now is gonna be used for someone's salary in-house. So you'll see those things as well. You're also gonna see um, just simple descriptions, right? Things that maybe, you know, why we're doing what we're doing. So Tricia, if you could click on here, I want to sort of get into another little area of one other sort of explanation. So if you can just scroll down a little bit, and let's see if we can get, keep going. Um, there's some, yeah, okay, right here, this is perfect. So here's the maintenance of plant area, okay? So that's um, like buildings and grounds, right? Custodial maintenance, the sixteen hundred and sixteen, sixteen twenty and sixteen twenty-one area. You're gonna see, this is a great example because we also, at the last meeting that we were at together, right? I talked about all those monies that we have to take over to the special aid code out of the budget. And so throughout the budget, here's a great example, I'm showing you where we're gonna pull that money from, okay? They're not program cuts. It doesn't mean that, that um, anything is going away. It's literally taking money out of this budget code and moving it into another budget code. And we will be tracking that, right, in a separate tool. So we, when, when I present throughout the year, because we do year-round budgeting, I will be keeping track of our special aid funds and our special aid spending. And so then that way you'll be able to see sort of how we're doing. And we do that typically at finance committee, right? So, you know, throughout the budget, Tricia, if you just want to keep going, I want to show you the twenty-one-ten code, so go up just a little, keep going down a little bit. Twenty-one-ten right here, so this starts, this is really the bulk of our budget. As you can see here, there's thirty-seven million in there, right? That is what the state terms sort of as general education. The next grouping underneath that is essentially special education, right? These are most, a lot of our instructional lines, but we also have lines for guidance. We have lines for social work. We have lines for school psychologists. We have lines for nursing. We have lines for uh, guidance ENL, occupational ed, you can see, right? All of these things, school library. So some things are broken out, right? Even though they're kind of part of the educational process, because they by law have a particular budget code that goes with them, right? General education then captures almost everything that happens in um, elementary and secondary, right? Including our music, things like that, that are part of the curricular day. So, if we scroll all the way down to the bottom, Tricia, I'm sorry, look away, you'll get nauseous. All right. This last page is sort of where the benefits are, all of our bands and bonds, how we pay for our capital projects, right? All of our borrowings that we've seen, principles and interest payments. This line down here, this last part here is what we would be putting into all of our budget documents in terms of when is the budget change from year to year, right? Last year, we believed at this moment in time last year, it was gonna take us one hundred and forty-five million and then some to run the district, right? This year, we believe in the general fund that it's gonna take us a hundred and forty-eight million, nine hundred and forty-four thousand, ninety-eight dollars. We couldn't, Angela and I can't, you know, the two dollars, we just couldn't find it.
Truly, you could spend eight less dollars.
Uh, we could go down and spend eight less, we could, we could. We probably could. I don't know which principle we tell, though we couldn't give that eight dollars to, we'll have to figure that out, people would go.
Okay, man.
I'm kidding. But the change over time, one year to the next, right, is two point five nine percent. So remember that in this general fund, it incorporates obligations that we have. We have people, right? We promised just tonight, we made a promise and a commitment for our employees' association. We have ESPs, which are our educational support professionals, our teachers' association, our principals and directors, our substitutes, right, our managerial confidential, everybody. Uh, we have promised through contracts, right, that there are certain terms and conditions that over the course of years, there are salary increases, there are, there are opportunities and supports to get further education, to um, use benefit time, there are health insurance, all of those things, those costs increase, right? And so you're gonna see that this general fund, that's really where the bulk of all that is. That's what the driving factor is from going from one year to the next. It's really our people, okay? And they're worth much more than we could ever budget, truly. And we believe in that. We believe that this budget is a value statement, right? It's like who we are as a district. And when Dr. Brown presents, he really gets into that. He really starts to talks about um, you know, uh, what, what are, what our goals are, what is important to us as a community. And so, you know, this is, this for me, I've always said, I feel like I'm really lucky as a business official. Uh, I, I recognize that these are numbers on paper, but they represent just invaluable opportunities for both adults and for young people. And so I really appreciate all the time that we spend on it and really ask questions and dig deeply. Um, because I don't want it to just be a bunch of numbers that goes out to the community, right? I really want people to have an understanding. So, that's what we shared at finance committee, maybe with a little more passion and a mask on, because we were virtual. Um, and, you know, now is the time, if anybody had questions about this expenditure report, we can do that. The last slide of my presentation, I kept it really simple tonight, was just the revenue again, right? So we updated this bottom line because every time we work on things or we forget things, or Lily and I are meeting, or Dan and I are meeting, or Bob and I are meeting, we say, oh my gosh, we forgot this, we gotta, or that really was double budgeted, we clean it up. So we're really close. I think that this is pretty much as close as we're gonna get. And uh, and then we talk about the revenue each time about, you know, you have to bring in money to be able to expend it on the operations. So that's the, that's for tonight, where we are. And then I can open it up for questions as long as we need.
And Amanda, I mean, to, to your point, as we keep tweaking, uh, the numbers that you have signed are slightly different than.
They are slightly different from the other night.
From the other night, and the state still has the opposite.
That is correct. So that's why the revenue slide, the very last slide, Tricia on the budget presentation, if you don't mind, another tab. Yeah, that's great. And then the next slide. That's why, right here, right, this is not final. I keep saying that because we don't know yet what our final state aid number is going to be. And so as, as this increases, right, it really impacts the amount of the savings account that we put in to balance the budget. We can directly decrease the savings account amount, um, and therefore put it sort of on the state, which is another form of taxpayer dollars that funds our school districts.
And I try to, I'd also create a creative budget that is realistic.
That's right.
So when we look at, while we look at a year-over-year change in the budget of two point five nine percent, um, it should be understood that for that contract that, that we just approved tonight, by no means could we have settled with the union, with all those employees and said, okay, hey, you're, you know, we're this is that, we're, we're at two percent, we can't go any higher than that because of the tax levy limit or, you know, we're, we're stuck and we, we can't go higher. Um, in reality, that's not gonna work. And if you wanted to settle a five-year contract, we have to basically make a promise that we're going to, those increases are gonna be higher than that. Uh, because of the reality on the ground, inflation is much higher than two percent. I think we all know that now. But for several years, it was, inflation was zero or less than two and um, it was, you know, we were not seeing price increases. Uh, but now we are. And so reality is that, you know, we have to build a budget that will address that uh, and pay the bills. And, you know, there's thirty, what, thirty-eight million and that, just in benefits alone.
That is correct.
Benefits going to employees, which is all the, one of the great things about working for a public entity, a school district, is the benefits are not what you get in the private sector, they're far better than what you can get in the private sector. Yes, the cash is, cash payment is this, but there's a lot of benefits there that most folks just don't get, which is a pension, healthcare, uh, to a, a really great healthcare system. So it's, so again, reality-based budget. Uh, we try to do a lot here. Uh, we heard about the curriculum at the, at the high school and everything that we're doing across the district and uh, yeah, you can go, you can go lean, you can cut like crazy if you want. But that's not typically what this community expects. They expect, expect the full, full breadth. And uh, our mission is to, is to make sure every child coming through this district has what they need and has the opportunities that they deserve.
That's right.
I probably said that in the past, but.
I, I have. And I've repeated myself too. It is a moment in time study, right? The budgets are built so that if we miss something, right, there are opportunities in the budget, right? Where we say, okay, we're gonna put a little extra here in special education, in facilities, because we know that bathrooms need immediate attention. We know that we're gonna have a, a heating and cooling issue, even though we have capital project going. We know that families move into our district, right, and need services and we have to pay for them. There's no way you can anticipate that. So, you know, we're very open about building in um, what we consider to be sort of like tier-one fund balances. Like they're gonna be used most likely, right? They're in there and they are, they are, um, because of the trends that we've always had. We know that there are unexpected items that come up, right? We also know that there might be positions in here that um, may be a permanent position that we fill with a substitute. We do know that too, because the hiring challenges are not gonna be going away, but we want to have that funding in here to be able to hire at the ready, when we find, when we find great people, right? So I think that's all, that's all built into this as well. So you, you do anticipate year-to-year increases for sure.
And there's some think that this is really dry and boy, this is very, this is really dull. But uh, this is actually, this is a value statement. And this is our, our statement of value to the community and the community has the ultimate. They, they have to say, shall the district, that's the language in the resolution, shall the district spend this? And what does that give, that give the community? And so, this is um, this is a, it's a more profound document than just numbers on a page. I'm just killing time, Amanda, so. Any, any questions out there um, in here?
I, I would make a statement. Um, given the economic condition of this country and inflation, wages, um, personnel shortages and people leaving the educational um, the educational field. I, I am amazed that our increase is only two point five nine percent. I am saddened that the increase in state aid is under fifty thousand dollars for our district for the entire year. And I want to add my voice to be committed to treating all of our employees well, to trying to attract employees to the district who want to do the work and to supporting this budget. This is an incredibly tight budget given all of the forces that are descending on every school district in terms of wages, utilities, uh, fuel costs, transportation. Ithaca has a long history of wanting to do the right thing by our students and by our educators. And I am adding my voice to that and hoping that that is um, is the feeling this year. We are facing unprecedented challenges since I was a teenager in the seventies. Unprecedented economic challenges. And um, I think this budget is very, very reasonable.
High praise coming from Pat, Amanda.
No, I, I think Pat's right on the money, but I also, you know, want to point out, and hopefully there are some questions, because Amanda does an excellent job of breaking down the light items, line items, the allocation of our funds, where we spend our money. And also to consider during these times, we are going to see cost increases across the board um, with all the factors that Pat just spoke to. Um, we, we've seen gas prices, you know, we have a fleet of buses that, and vehicles that have to service our school district. Uh, it's not going to be a small amount of money to fuel them to get our kids to school and back home. Um, you know, recruiting and retaining the best. And also our commitment to our retirees and, and to everything else we do. And so we've got to factor that in. Um, Amanda did a great job just speaking to our expenses, where we spend our money, how it gets allocated, and also understanding that if you see an increase this year and it looks outrageous, it probably means something got shifted from the previous year or something got moved that was allocated in a different place. The beauty of our school district is we have an Amanda, we have an Angela, you know, but also we present our finances in such a way that we try to be transparent, we try to explain it and break it down because it's a daunting amount of information. So hopefully, folks will take a step back and say, hey, I saw this, can you explain it to me? Because Amanda does an excellent job of breaking that down, you know. A, a lot of times I'll get questions about finance and things like that. I um, unapologetically defer to Amanda who navigates this with so much ease. Uh, but when you look at our budget and what we're trying to do to drive this forward, this, this is really crunch time. We do year-round budgeting, but from February, you know, until eight, the end of April, we're talking about the components of our budget, what goes into it, how do we make this work? So now's the time to really start asking those questions and start understanding how we get to that final number and, and what that means before we bring it to the voters.
Go ahead. Um, I just had a question about um, the twenty-one-ten section of the budget, the teaching regular school. Um, for the part about, okay, so the second one, so there's teacher salaries and then there's teacher assistant kid, you say, um, increased AI support. Um, I guess I, I mean, I think it's great. Um, but like, what, what drove that, I guess, like increase of work? Or like, is that, because the recode special aid fund, it's like the teacher salaries are losing, losing money, but not really because it's getting transferred, you know, that thing. Um, but like, where is that increased AI support coming from? I guess that money, or, yeah?
Yep. So I, I could drill down a little deeper in the budget doc, right, to tell you exactly. So the first two. Oh, yeah. So I, I could drill down a little deeper in the budget document to tell you exactly. So the first two lines there, those are all elementary, right? And so I know specifically, we did, we tried to do a lot more around literacy support, right? And really tried to um have more teaching assistants be there to support young people. So I'm from my recall, that's where that's directly coming from, right? At the elementary level, Mary Grover has been like leading that charge, right? It's been fantastic. Um, when it comes to teaching assistance and teacher aides in the twenty-two-fifty code, that's driven by IEPs and five oh fours. And that fluctuates every year, right? Those numbers go up and down based on the meetings that we have through the CSE process and what young people need, right? And so sometimes when we see a decrease there, it's because aides and assistants are doing exactly the work that they're doing and driving young people to independence, right? And then what we do oftentimes is maybe move them as a building aide or a literacy aide or a math aide or um family liaison, right, which would show up in this twenty-one-ten code, right, to ensure that, that we have supports there as well. So the other time, when you see sometimes um decreases, remember too that if a retirement happened before budget season, right? That person typically makes a higher salary than a new position that we would create. And so you might see a decrease, not because we're decreasing positions, but the cost of doing that work has actually decreased because uh newer teachers, right, they're not making the salary level of teachers that would retire. But that one, I think, I think that that's a, almost positive, that's the attribution for that one. Okay? And we can come like those, those specific questions, what we've done in the past, and we can do it again, is that um after this meeting, and I'll make sure you're all included, we can actually start a, a Google Doc, right, where we're putting in the budget code and you just ask that specific question. By the next meeting, and when Dr. Brown presents, I can have all those specific questions answered for you, because then that way I can dive into the budget document. And sometimes errors are caught, which is great, because you know, we're human and we'll be pulling this together. So it's really good. Yeah, thanks for the question.
So Amanda, um, well, folks are thinking, um, let's talk about uh the, let's talk about the tax rate. And we're doing it a little, well, I think a little differently this year to, you know, years past, it's well, uh, you have to preface it just slightly. Um, Cummings County, Ithaca has been a green dot in upstate New York for a long, long time. Uh, meaning that there was economic activity here, there was growth here, when frankly, everywhere else in upstate New York it was not. And that's been a benefit to this district, this community. Um, and we are the only small upstate city where there's, uh, I'm counting three or four cranes, uh, construction, new development going on. Uh, driver on upstate New York a little bit, uh, typically see the opposite of that. And that's a benefit to the tax base. And uh, so that has definitely grown. Um, city center, the stuff on East Hill, uh, which is taxable, not Cornell property, but other properties that certainly is taxable. Development in the West End, where, my part of the world. Um, and um, so there's lots of very interesting projects going on. That only helps the tax rate come down because levy is this a dollar amount. And so, uh, and so typically we would pass, pass the budget and the tax levy would be what it is. And then um eventually in August, the tax rate will come out, because that's a different calculation. And so we're looking at this year, shooting for a, a tax rate at sixteen eighty-four and keeping it flat and keeping so that's a different, different way to approach this. And so how do we, how do we estimate that as we go through? And if you just want to just
Right, so we have a
It's been going, it's been going down consistently. We're approaching twenty, but we've come down
That's, that is correct. Yeah, I actually, I pulled the, a spreadsheet just so that I can look. And again, I can share these uh for Dr. Brown's presentation as well. Um, the tax rate, uh, we are, we are lower than the tax rate that we had in twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve and twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen. Um, so twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen, we had sixteen dollars and ninety-five cents. In twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, we had sixteen dollars and ninety cents. So we are lower than that. And um, to your point, Rob, we did meet with the county assessor's office, right? There, we can control um the levy, right? We can control the levy amount because we are a taxable entity. And then we can also work with the county assessor's office to uh know what we want our tax rate to be and then calculate based on the assessed value of the community that comes out of the county assessor's office, right, from our own home reassessments and the assessed value of our home, whether it's reassessed or not, and any new things that come on the, on the books. And then we can determine what essentially the numerator is of that equation, which is the levy, right? And we, so we know what our rate is. We know what the total assessed value is in August. And then we can determine the levy amount so that we can lock in that rate. It's a really simple math problem, right? And so um, so essentially what we are doing here in this, in, in this chart that I'm showing you is um estimated right now, our numerator is, the, these two amounts, right, um, added together. That's essentially what we think our estimated levy would be, so that we can ensure that our taxpayers know that their tax rate will not increase next year.
Still be at that rate of ten years ago.
That is, exactly. We will be back at the, at the twenty-eleven rate, less than the twenty-eleven rate.
So that's go ahead, Dr. Brown.
Yeah, we will, we will focus on the conversation on the fifth, on this issue, because I, I anticipate this is what people will stop Mr. Malcolm and Wegmans about, or other places folks are going to be in the community, understanding what we mean by um needing the sixty percent vote. Uh, understanding how this is a fiscally responsible approach to budgeting. Um, and again, thank you, Amanda. Um, kudos to you and your team for how we've been able to navigate um our financial situation for the last decade to be in a place where we can have the lowest tax rate, lower our tax rate, and also increase the programs in this way.
Thanks, Dr. Brown. You didn't break up at all. That was great. Excellent, Dr. Brown. Way to get the technology down, Dr. Brown. That's real appreciated. Um, and we look forward to seeing you back here, Dr. Brown. Uh, when you do your good work down there after you do. Um. I've killed time. I've asked questions of any, but we're going to, I'm not hearing much uh out there. So tell me about, this is the twenty seconds, the seven days from now is the twenty-ninth.
Go back to the first part of the session.
We're not meeting on the twenty-ninth because it's an extra Tuesday in March. And that's a day that people should do something else than probably be here, right?
Tuesday off, what do you do?
Right, that's, I know. What, what shall we do? Um, so, so April fifth?
April fifth is the new budget-focused meeting, special meeting to discuss the budget. And I think um, that is, that is really where um, you know, all of us as exec team members, you know, can support Dr. Brown and his presentation of the budget and and uh be here to answer questions.
In person.
In person? Sure. You know, that's, that's fantastic.
And so you're calling it a special uh meeting of the Board of Education, but uh we are going to make it a special voting meeting because we have contracts perhaps. So
For the capital project. That is correct.
Right, so, so we, we may indeed be accepting bids at that.
So I'll correct this here, Tricia, and then we can correct it as well. Tricia and I work in the end of one of these things.
As LACS knows, until the board actually votes and say, yes, we accept these contracts to do the work at LACS, frankly, the board has to approve those. It just doesn't happen. So look for those bids to be hopefully ready to go by the fifth, sooner the better. Um, it has been delayed a bit because of state ed, not us, not your team, Amanda. So uh, look for that on the fifth. Then uh, there's a regular Board of Education meeting on the twelfth.
That's correct.
And that meeting, we will likely look to see if we can get uh five board members to uh approve. Sorry, approve the budget.
That's it.
Um, we hope obviously more, but uh, all you need is five.
Right. And then one other piece Tricia knows is too, it's on our radar, the Bosse's budget, right? I just didn't have that on this calendar, but that also the vote. Um, and that'll happen at a regular scheduled board meeting.
Excellent. So um, I think we can um, there's, the more detailed budget document is now
Oh, yeah. Explore away, send me questions, and I'll try to create a mechanism to gather those, okay?
So um, if, if you're good, uh, once again, we appreciate Angela's work um for a few more months. Uh, so we're not um, it's, we're not quite sure what happens after Angela retires, but uh, we'll, we'll get to that later.
That's right.
So really, just for the next uh ten minutes, maybe, we will do committee updates. Just run down pretty quickly. We already talked about finance, for gosh sakes. So committee updates, curriculum if uh altered or want to just wait in for a minute or two? Or not?
Uh, yeah, thanks. Um, so Nicole and I uh started our deep dive into what's happening in curriculum at the different grade levels. We started with pre-k through two, visited some classrooms in at Caroline and Bell Sherman. They got to see some pretty amazing teaching. And uh, we're very impressed with the diversity of our curriculum, as well as the diversity of the images and the materials in the classroom. It's actually pretty profound. Um, we're going to follow that up and have those teachers come in and do our typical debrief. But find out, you know, more specifically about what they're using to accomplish literacy. Um, get some more examples of how they're integrating technology. Ask about specifics of their social-emotional learning components of the curriculum. So yeah, we're, we're, we're uh, we're going to go on a deep dive this time. And I don't know if our next effort is going to be to high school because of the schedule thing, but our plan was to go three through five, six to eight, and then get to the high school, but we may have to adjust that. But so, yeah, we're off to a great start. And uh, I don't know if Nicole has anything to add, if she's still with us, but cannot tell you how much fun we had. These kids are learning stuff that it, I'm just blown away. I didn't know half the stuff they learned until I was in college.
Thanks, E. Um. Right, I think, uh, right, we'll just move on. Facilities, we've already talked about it, basically. Uh, phase two uh bid opening was today. Uh, there were multiple bidders, pretty much right on uh the estimates of where we will be with phase two. So uh, we will accept uh those recommended bids likely on the fifth and look for work to begin in the right spots around the district. LACS, new entryway at South Hill. With, went in those uh theater spaces, those nineteen seventy-one theater spaces, those will be renovated. Um, entryways for both going into it. Work at Enfield and work at Bell Sherman and really kind, there's work going on all over. So uh, we are in design development for three A and three B. So that's going on right now. So lots of interesting stuff throughout the district. And yes, we're renovating bathrooms all over the district as we go around. Uh, and HR, human resources, if anyone, Chris.
I will
HR, right?
I will try to do HR justice. Um, we've definitely been going over recruitment and retention initiatives. Uh, Gudira gave us an excellent presentation uh last month on her initiatives and what she was focusing on, how she was reaching um different communities and um sought after teacher positions. We will be moving on to tenure review the next upcoming month. Uh, we've got a few focused ones scheduled where the building leaders come in and share uh necessary information before we go on to vote.
Thanks, Chris. Um, Gudira, the students had, they've been having questions about that. Did you want to just talk about that a bit tonight? I think maybe we were going to have you speak to that. If you'd like to go ahead and do that.
Yeah, I, so I'll, I'll provide the, the same update and then whatever questions you all have. Um, Gudira Velazquez, Assistant Director of HR. Um, so I, I've been on the road. Um, I, I, I was at Owen College, um, February tenth, um, SUNY Binghamton, February twenty-third. Uh, SUNY Broadport, March second. I was at uh New Paltz uh last week. Um, tomorrow I'll be attending a educator networking dinner. Um, and this will be the third year I've attended that. Um, it's uh been a great opportunity to talk to um students that are graduating from education programs in May, um, and answer questions for them, provide them with advice as well as their interviewing and such. Um, and uh, last year we were able to actually recruit um two teachers from there. Um, so I'm looking forward to that tomorrow. Um, I'll also be in Alfred University on Thursday, um, SUNY Plattsburgh, the thirtieth. Um, there's going to be Teacher Area Recruitment Fair, the April fifth, sixth, and seventh. And so that's um Rochester, there's one for Rochester area, one for Buffalo, um, and then Central New York, um, which is hosted by SUNY Corbin. Um, uh, we will also be, uh, so for, for teachers, um, right now, we're starting our twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three hiring process. Uh, we've started it a little earlier, um, in hopes that we can screen more frequently and interview um, uh, more frequently. So um, we have it scheduled where we're screening every two weeks, holding interviews. Uh, the following week after screening, um, and then hopefully we can also be able to uh hire quicker. We get, you know, um, get those great candidates. Um, we are, uh, we have offered um positions to uh two new teachers, one at the high school, um, and that, or, or currently that are being um uh board-approved, one at the high school, another um in one of our secondary buildings, that's still to be determined, the exact location. Um, and one more that we're finalizing will be presented in a future um personnel report. Um, uh, but there'll be great additions to our secondary schools and definitely add to the um Board of Education policy of workforce diversity. Um, so I'm very excited um about uh those hires. Um. The, you have any questions so far? I also, I can go over the staffing um updates that I
Is there a reason why we're only looking at uh like grad programs where we have like younger, I guess, less experienced, experienced educators?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, so uh, it's um, really just in an effort to, to reach all areas. Um, so that's, we're looking also in other areas. Um, also, you know, we held an event here to, to be able to connect with, um, uh, with teachers. Um, so it's just, it's just in, in an effort to, to reach more people, but it's not limited to that. Um, and so in terms of staffing, um, so I've provided an update. Um, we um, you know, with, with us dealing with the pandemic. Um, so there were a lot of vacancies at one point with our education support professionals um and um special education teachers. Um, so right now, um, we have five current vacancies, which has reduced a lot um in terms of the education support professionals. Uh, we uh still need three at LACS, um, one at South, one at South Hill and one at Columbia Heights there. And so Jennifer Gondik, um, and um also another master educator, I've worked hard to continue um uh higher, holding interviews frequently so that we can fill those positions. Also as substitutes, um, so we know that in having substitutes, that would also alleviate if teachers needed to be out uh due to COVID or, or whatever it was. Um, so we have really um improved that process, that hiring process of looking at applications, onboarding, um, uh substitutes. So as of um, after this um personnel report, we will have board-approved sixty-two substitutes. Um, those are forty substitute teachers, thirteen substitute aides, six substitute teaching assistants, two substitute clerical, and one substitute uh food service helper. Um, and so um hoping more substitutes, then it'll also And so hoping more substitutes, then it'll also alleviate as well teachers that need to be out. A school bus driver, so we had ten trainees, two have passed the road test. So that leaves us with eight that are, and seven which have passed permit tests, who are scheduled for road tests. I'll be providing another update on that, but we are, yeah, it is increasing our bus drivers. And nurses, so we have all of our positions covered. We are through nurses that we've contracted, but all of our vacancies are covered right now. Facilities, we continue to hold onsite walk-in interviews every Thursday from one to three. That has really helped us fill the custodian vacancies. We currently do have two ground vacancies that we're, we're looking to fill. And, and we've also held radio ads announcing that. That has really helped. Yeah, and quite a few phone calls with people that are interested in that. Let me see. Human resource administrative assistance, so we are hiring for two new administrative assistants, which will help with, we have in short staffed, and so that will help. Currently, we do have an internal candidate that would be joining the HR team in the next couple of weeks. And Karen Borden, who has so much knowledge, has been in the district for a long time. In HR, a lot of his circle will be training her, training the new person. So that will be great. I'm looking forward to welcoming that person. And also in terms of our improving our, our systems, our processes, we are implementing Google Forms that will replace our paper hiring forms. So we use a lot of paper in HR for the hiring forms. So as of, we have an anticipated launch date, and, and HR has worked really great with IT. We have an anticipated launch date of April fourth, where we will be converting our paper forms, posting recommendations, interview forms, personnel recommendations, professional references, all of that we do with paper. And so we're now going to be using Google and doing Google Forms. It's kind of a, it's, it's a first major step to converting into paperless recruiting. We also, we have an anticipated June, July, where we're gonna go to a platform that will have all of that. So, so I'll, I'll be updating on that. Yeah, so that is, and also HR. So I've been on the road, but also my team has been on the road in the buildings. And shout out to all the HR professionals because they have really been very flexible. We've been going out to the buildings to, instead of employees have to come to us during their breaks or during, you know, after, after their work day, then we're having office hours in the HR buildings, which allows us to re-code COVID days as then. One of the major things, answer any questions, salary increments, certifications, attendance entries, and so that's been received very, it's been received with very well. So that's my update. You have any questions?
Hey, Gladira, this is Eldred. I have a question for you. When you are going to these places and meeting these young prospective educators and folks who wanna work in public education, do they know about Ithaca? I mean, is it like, have they had a chance to do any research? And have they discovered that we might be a good destination? Or are you doing, are you doing this selling when you're out there?
Both, both. So I, when I was at SUNY New Paltz last week, I had so many students ask me about the anti-marginalization. And I'm like, oh, tell me more about that. That's very interesting. And so this, they have been doing their research and have they themselves seen what sets us apart? And I'm also doing the selling and, and asking those questions that are most important to us. You know, diversity, equity, inclusion, and also, you know, differentiation and instruction. So, yes, I've had some great conversations.
Well, I agree. Excellent job, excellent effort. You, you're very busy, Gladira.
Yes, I am very.
But a tremendous, at, at that.
I'm happy to be very busy.
At that HR meeting, it was really great to see really the amount of positions that had been filled through, well, through effort and, and we're, we're getting there, so it's great.
Thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
It's great to see that we're like reaching out a lot more. This might be a little bit vague and maybe too specific, but what are like the certain like specifications or criteria that we're implementing to choose like the best or to hire the best educators we can to ICST?
Yeah, so we have really thought about our interview questions, that our interview questions align on what the district goals. We also, on our job vacancies, we have mandatory responses, mandatory questions that we're asking candidates to be able to, to respond so that we can review, okay, does it align with what our students need, what our students are asking for? So, so that's one of the major type there, the interview questions.
Thanks, Gladira. Have you seen Aaron's problem?
Hello. So the advocacy committee has been working on, with Gladira actually, on getting certification for out-of-state teachers, just making it easier in New York. And that is gonna be something that we're gonna get an update on in our next meeting, and I'll have an update for you for our following meeting. A couple other things we're doing, school lunches, we worked with Beth Kraus. She's piloting some efforts at multiple schools where at Northeast, for instance, there's no longer chocolate milk. At another school, there is, I forget, I think juice is not there. We're also working to make sure that water is available near where students get their meals so they are not going for the sugary drinks. And then, of course, the other thing that we're doing is, is, is following up with, as Rob mentioned, I didn't realize that yet, so thank you for that update earlier, Rob. Now seeing if, if we can use some of our efforts in our work to get school lunches to continue to be funded. In our next meeting, we're gonna be talking about all of those things in addition to the voting age. And then, of course, the huge, huge thing, I don't mean to bury the lead. If anyone remembers, Anne Reichlin last year started working on getting immunization information transferred from doctors' offices directly to schools. Just that information because the nurses were inputting it anyway. So that legislation passed, which means that our school nurses are going to, and this is for the whole state of New York, our school nurses are gonna have such relief with just a part of their job. And that's a really big deal. And so Anne, we had her at our last meeting and, and we just thanked her, and she's a force, and we miss her, and it was tremendous work that she did along with Carrie and others, Carrie Burke. I believe that's it, unless I've missed something, unless Eldred has something to add.
Thanks, Erin.
Nope, I'm good, Erin. Thanks.
And Pat, you're the policy person, if you're still out there.
Yes, I am the only policy person still here. And before I report on policy, I just wanna give a shout out to Gladira for her exceptional work in recruitment to this district as a former, I was on, I was on human resources for almost ten years, and I was chair for several years. And one cannot estimate, underestimate the value of a caring, empathetic human resources recruiter to go out within the state and beyond the state to try to attract top talent to our districts. I'm gonna say I love and respect you, Gladira, and my daughter, who you mentored during her volunteer summers in the human resources office, also loves and respects you, and thank you for working for our district. Moving on to policy, our last, our last meeting was focused on the various policies around sexual harassment, bullying, equal opportunities, and, and basically Title IX. And what, you know, we're looking, we're looking at policies that date, date back to the nineteen eighties, which have not been reexamined or incorporated into current current norms and expectations. And so that is, that is basically what, what we are working on right now. Trying to make a cohesive whole out of all of the various policies from the various levels in our, in our policy book to bring a comprehensive overview, cohesiveness and, and effectiveness to this incredibly important question.
Thanks, Pat. That's it for committees and other discussion items. We covered a lot tonight, and not just budget, Amanda, it was great, and touched a lot of items. Truly, the upcoming days are important, April fifth, there's policy and HR, but especially at six o'clock. It will just be focused on the budget and that presentation with a short, short consent agenda, hopefully with bids on. So, so that's coming up April fifth, and everybody can take next week off. And, but spring break is coming up sometime, isn't it? When is that, like, twelve thirty? But we have to, we have to meet on the twelfth to pass, pass the budget, so. So don't feel students perhaps, you know, have to be here, but, but if you got nowhere else to be, I mean. Gladira, thank you very much for, for your update. We are looking forward to that because of all the great work that you've done. And Dr. Brown, anything? You're still, you're still there?
I'm all good. Thank y'all. Good to see you tonight.
Well, we'll see you when you get back. Thanks, everybody. We're, we're all good. And we are here.